Everyone, Western Hills Water District Special Meeting of the Board of Directors Wednesday, July 28, 2021, 7:04 PM, and we're reconvening into the open session. There are no reportable actions taken during the closed session. We're going to move to actionable items. So this is the reason the emergency meeting is being brought. Last week, when I was on vacation, Ron called me and we've had a lot of problems happening with our infrastructure up at the treatment plant. And he's gotten a cost to fix everything, and that is what action item is all about. It's $47,775 worth of expenses that we need. And so that's why we're calling the emergency meeting. So Ron, I'm going to ask you to explain to everybody what these air conditionings are and what the problem is.
Okay, so as you know, coming up Diablo Grande Parkway there, we have four different lift stations, and those lift stations are how they house the variable frequency drives that that move the water from the aqueduct all the way up to the treatment plant. Those units and those those buildings are 16 years old, and they we've had them serviced every year. This year, the guys came out to service them, and there were two that were not not repairable. And so we originally had got a quote for two of them. But then by the time we got the quote, the third one had quit working. And and during the summer, when you know the temperatures up there, the temperatures are up to 100, 102, up to 106, it's it's hot. Those those are actually commercial air conditioners, and they keep that inside of that building, not real cool, but they keep it at like 80 degrees, which helps immensely on those motors and the VFDs. So I went ahead and and asked the guy to give me a quote for four of them. Because, like I said, they're 16 years old. If three of them have quit working, the fourth one is not far behind. And the fourth one would be at lift station number one. That's the only one that is still working, and that is the main one that pumps up from the aqueduct to the other three lift stations. So and that that one's got 300 horsepower motors in it, so it gets quite warm in there.
So in your board packets board, you have Bel Air Mechanical with the estimate. And can you explain to us and the the folks why we only have one estimate?
Yes, actually, I called probably six or seven different air conditioning companies around. There's even a gentleman that lives right there in Diablo Grande that we tried to get a hold of. And nobody ever, they said they would come up, but they never responded. And so I called him again, oh, yeah, we're going to be there, and they never responded. So I I got a, we got a different company that does work for us. So he recommended this guy because he's you they've used them before. And the guy called me and the next day he was there to give me an estimate and and help us out with our problem. They sent a technician trying to fix them, and they're just not repairable. They're sold, they don't even he said they don't even make parts for those anymore.
Anybody from the board have any questions for Ron in regards to this? So this is, and this would be an expense from our Melrose Refinance Bond money, and it would it would be one of those expenses for infrastructure, and it would not have to be paid back. Mark, are you there?
I am.
Are you hello, are you wanting? Because if we approve this, is this one of those funds to help you in your articulation of the money? Would you like to do this with a wire? Or are we going to approve this as a check like we have been doing?
Yeah, it's best.
How would you like to handle this?
Yeah, it's best for accounting purposes, since this is an infrastructure issue. We can legally pay for this replacement under the using Melrose Refinance Bond money. And under that circumstance, what I prefer to do is to just do a wire transfer directly from the Melrose Fund to the vendor who's going to be doing this work. Otherwise, we have to transfer to the district checking account and then pay out of that directly.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
So also, let me also another thought of mine, it just occurred to me also, this may be a possible depreciation expense. So let me actually check with with the accountant proper and ask them their opinion too. Because if it's a it's if it's a depreciated expense, then that's a kind of a an advantage for us as far as the district. So in retrospect, let me double check and clarify that with the accountant, and then I'll get back with the board and advise accordingly.
Awesome. So this has to happen soon, because again, three of them have gone out, and we can't let with the heat index the way it is, we can't have it not getting repaired. So if there's not any questions for the board, I'd like to put it up for a motion. Is there anybody else having any questions?
We can approve this without without designating the actual fund. Can't we say pending Mark's investigation on depreciation? Okay, good.
Yeah, Linda, either way, it'll come out of the Melrose Fund.
Yeah.
It's it's just a matter of how the funds are actually transferred, either into the 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 business account itself, or I just do a direct deposit from the Melrose Account to the actual vendor itself.
Well, I I personally think that looking at this quote that it's very, I just replaced the the air conditioner in my rental home, and it was about $10,000. So this is for commercial unit, which are obviously more expensive. This looks very reasonable.
Four of them, yeah. All right, so let's I I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-13, Resolution for the Western Hills Water District Approval of Expenditures of Approximately $47,775 of Diablo Grande Community Facilities District One Melrose Bond Refinance Proceeds for the Replacement of the Air Conditioner Units in the Western Hills Water District Lift Stations. And there's a grand total of four of them. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Perfect. I will move to action item B, and that's the consideration and approval of the motion to approve the Western Hills Water District Treatment Plant Employees Wage Increase. Do I have a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, this leads us to action item C. And I guess I want to preface this a little bit for the community. Ever since we did our ordinance, I just want to say thank you to everybody in the community that is doing their part. Everybody has been doing a great, great job saving and conserving water. So I want to put that out there first and foremost. Second thing, ever since we put the ordinance in place, Ron and I have been racking our brains, seriously racking our brains on how we as the Water District can, A, help our community in this time of crisis, and i- in ways of putting water out there. Because we have a water crisis issue, and there are so many different facets of it. It's it's not just one thing, it's there's several things. And so, first of all, Ron has been watering the Pianor and the Zimphandel HOA considered areas of landscaping, all of the Parkway, all the way down around the roundabout and out towards the guard shack. He's been having his truck do that, I believe, Ron, three days a week, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then what he and I talked about it, because we started noticing the lawn in the park not doing well. He's now putting water from the truck on the lawn five days a week, correct, Ron?
Darren told me today, it's only he's only doing it three, but we will increase to five.
We're going to increase to five. So I just want the community to know that we as the Western Hills Water District, our job is to make sure that we are servicing our community to the best of our abilities under this horrible circumstance of having a developer, landowner, whatever you want to call these folks, not paying their bills. So we have decided to do this for the community. So I want the community to understand that when you see the truck out there spraying water all over the place, three, four, five days a week, understand that we are doing that to help the community. So then, over this past week, I got a call from Ron again, and he informed me that we have an algae bloom issue. And before we go any further into the next part of this, I'd like him to explain to the community the algae bloom and how this is affecting our water supply. Go ahead, Ron.
Okay, so every year, everybody knows we get our our surface water out of the aqueduct. Well, every year, the Harvey Banks Sub Tower Station, they shut down, and which they can't flow water through the aqueduct at that time. Well, when that happens, it would be just like your swimming pool or anything else. If you do not circulate the water, algae starts building up on the sides, it turns green. Well, that's that is what is happening. It's getting better now. I don't know if they have start moving water yet, but the the algae is not appearing to grow as much. And the treatment plant is actually starting to run longer than it was last week. Last week, we were getting two and three hour runtimes on our filters because they were just plugging up with algae. So we'd have to backwash it out, run three hours, backwash it out. And and this this week, we're getting better runtime, so we're not having a backwash as much.
And again, the reason we're getting so much algae, again, is because of the canal slowing down. The state water project is flowing the water in the canal, and they're not giving water out anymore. Which brings us to the next part of this discussion, and that is us approving a three day watering week. This has been probably one of the hardest decisions that this board has had to make. You know, we know series and Turlock are down to two days. I'm going to go a little bit into this with the community, because I think, again, transparency transparency is always better. We are in the middle of a negotiation right now with Kern. We have a negotiator, and we are working with Kern. We are literally in conversations with Kern. These conversations are going well. I am not going to get into the details, but I'm just letting the community know there is light at the end of the tunnel. I am ecstatic on the way things are moving. David, our attorney, our consultant, myself, even Julie from this board, we are in constant discussions with Kern County, and we're having good, good conversation. I would like us, if you would please, to step out of our bubble for a moment of our community. Right now, in California, there is a massive drought. Farmers are being told they're not going to have water anymore. This is a fact. And if you step out of our bubble, and if you go on this road trip with me for just a moment, please allow me to bloviate, if you would, because I'm trying to help you understand what we're trying to deal with. You have Kern Water Agency telling farmers now they're going to lose their farms. You have Kern telling their farmers your crops are going to die. It's going to put a price jump on all of our vegetation and the vegetables we buy. It's a very serious situation that California is in when you get outside of our bubble. So we're in the middle of working with and talking to and negotiating with Kern, a water agency that's literally pulling the plug and stopping the water going to farmers in California. And in my head is, and and even in our consultant's head, it's a really hard sell to go to them and say, oh, by the way, we need more water because the people in our community, they don't like it that their lawns are dying. Do you see how the optics, because I know that's a fun word right now, optics in that situation are not good? It doesn't make us look like serious people trying to work a contract that's going to be good for our development. So it's been very difficult for us in this situation, and that is why we were moving to this two day thing. We are showing Kern with this ordinance that we are with good faith, the only good faith we have, because we have $3 million of debt sitting down there, we're still pulling water and we're not paying for it. And with this negotiation that's going on, that once again, I'm telling you is going really, really well, it's hard to go in there with a straight face and say, hey, can we get some more water? Because we want our lawns green, when they're shutting the water off to all the farmers in the Central Valley, and people are going to lose their farms. The optics right now is a really shitty time to try to try to get more water. So in saying that and giving this picture for you, I want you all to understand that we as a board have been working with this type of situation, and it's a very dicey situation. So again, while on vacation, I spoke with our consultant, our water consultant, who's working directly with the Kern representatives. And I said, hey, guys, our lawns are dying. We we really, we don't want to live in a barren land. We we, you know, this is driving me crazy. Then, funny enough, when I'm down there in LA, I get an email from the HOA. They're pissed and ticked off because they don't have enough water. And you know, they're getting the phone calls and the complaints of, my God, our landscaping. And they're looking at the bigger issue of in six months, in a year, when things get going again, the amount of money that's going to have to go into repairing everything and fixing everything, which I completely understand. So Ron and I, we're talking again, and we're trying to come up with solutions. Our consultant gives me a better feeling, because again, he's talking with the people who keep the gate open to allow the water to come up here. He's telling me, you know what? I think we're working so good right now, and we have a really good relationship going on right now. I think you guys are going to be able to get a little bit more water if needed. It's not enough for you to just go hog crazy and start watering the shit out of everything. But you probably will sometime in October, November, if you need a little bit more, you'll be able to get a little bit more, not a lot. I'm telling you, we're in a negotiation, and we're not wanting to piss these people off. I'm being very straightforward with you guys, because I think you guys can handle it. So after talking to our consultant, after talking to Ron, because now we bring in another piece of this problem, and that is our plant crew, the people who make the water to bring it to your house. This is another issue. So I want to back up a little bit and give you the next picture, and that is, is how are we going to make water up here so we can all have water come to our homes? Number one, we lost our T2 operator who could operate the plant solely, which means anytime this plant is making water, Ron has to be here. If we're having to water lawns to where it affects weekend watering or weekend making water to come to your homes during the weekend, that would mean Ron has to work six days a week. And then he needs staff to come up and work the lift stations. And if that happens, then we have to pay them overtime. We're running out of money right now while we're trying to do these negotiations that are going to fix everything. And I want you to have the hope that I do, because I see everything behind the scenes. But until we cross that finish line, we still live in the reality of not having enough money. We can't afford a team of people to come up here on the weekend to make water. So Ron and I have been talking last week, and even now, the the couple of days this week, he actually had lunch with me at my house today, and we were working on some things. We want and we support, and we're I'm I'm putting this before the board, but I'm letting you know that we want to go with a three day watering system. But it's going to be, it's it can be pulled so quickly if we don't have a community that comes together and keeps conserving and even tries to conserve more. I've asked Chad from the landscaping company to be on tonight, because we have to ask him some questions, because I think we need some answers. Here's what the proposal would be for a three day watering cycle. It would be a Monday, a Tuesday, and a Thursday. The Monday has to be between midnight and 6:00 AM, and why 6:00 AM? Because the guys are going to be coming in to make water. Yeah, we have to have water being made to be able to have water coming to your house and to water your lawns. So they're going to be coming in early and making water. You can't have a making water while we're watering the park and watering 42 houses, because as they're making water, the water's going to be going. So the Monday has to be between midnight and 6:00 in the morning. And if we can all be on the same page with that, and if Chad can say, all right, we can do that for Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, we're good with midnight to 8:00 in the morning. We can't do Wednesday, because if you do Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, or something like, according to Ron, we 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 don't have enough time to make enough water.
Right.
The other dilemma is the water has to be in the tank up on the hill, and we always have to have nine feet of water in there for fire issues. Now, if we were in the pouring rain right now, that would be less of a concern. But if we don't have nine feet in there, and there's a fire here, you're all going to be really pissed. You might have nice, beautiful lawns, but your houses might burn down. So there's that issue that comes into play. So with Ron and I talking, we think we can do a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. Monday, again, midnight to 6:00 in the morning, that people can water their lawns. And then Tuesday and Thursday, midnight to eight, eight in the morning. If we can do that, and try to even cut and conserve, and everybody keeps doing their part, we think we can push the water to maybe, maybe November, when the winter strikes up. Every news report's telling me we're going to be in La Niña, and we're probably not getting a lot of rain. Again, if that holds true, we will need to ask for water. But we think that we will get enough to get us to the end of the year, where then the 250 starts over again, or by then, we will have reached an agreement with Kern, and things are going to look brighter. So we're trying to do what we can. Ron, myself, David's been a part of this discussion. We've been doing what we can to to make this happen and not see our entire community die. And once again, this is not the HOA's fault. This is not Chad's fault. This is not the Water District's fault. This is once again, a group of people who buy bought this place for $100,000, less than any of us have bought for our homes for, and have not paid their bills, have not paid their contractual obligations, and has put this community in this dire situation. We're trying to find solutions. We think we have one. I'm going to open it up for people's comments as well, but I want to find out for Chad if these dates would work for him first. Chad, what do you think? Chad might have to put up his hand so we know who to open the phone.
Is he 408591?
Julie, what's Chad's number?
581, 581.
It ends in 581. Can we let him?
Hang on, Matt.
Is it the 9046?
2833, does it just say iPhone?
Yeah, it just says I I have just an iPhone.
No, no, what's the number? Hold on a minute, hold on.
Sorry, everyone, we're going to work this out.
Hold on a minute, hold on. 9046.
Yeah, 9046.
Okay.
We're going to unmute you now, Chad. Chad, are you there?
Hey, we're, we're.
Yeah, we're here.
All right, cool. What do you think about those dates?
Hey, we can make it work. I'm sitting here with the HOA President as well, Jose Perez.
Jose, does that, do you think that'll work?
I I think we can make that work, absolutely. And 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 I think everybody in the community is is engaged in conservation anyway.
Yes, yes.
And also the fact that you guys are watering the Parkway and the other side of the community is conserving quite a bit of water as well. So I think we can definitely make that work.
I can I just ask her real quick, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay.
I I was just going to ask a question on, I really think that if 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 if, since the whole issue is making water over the weekend, I mean, that's one of the biggest issues, is this just really distressing? Sometimes we do see people with water going on on the weekend, sometimes occasionally. And if we just kind of stress to the neighbors that please try not to run any water on the weekend, that's just really going to help this whole thing. I don't I don't think it had to be two days a week to start, you know, how I voted on that. But I I think that it just needs to be the limited time for the three days, but the big urgency for the residents is just, you know, try not to use any water on the weekend. I mean, that's all I have to say.
I I will make sure that we send out an email blast to the entire community to do everything they can to mitigate the situation, and then use as as little water as possible, and and try to do everything we can to conserve.
Thank you, Jose. And and just, go ahead, go ahead, Chad.
I just want to say, I've, we've got a six hour window now on Monday, which I'm going to have to cut back my times. I've had conversations with Ron over the last week. And right now, I'm having a hard time fitting in that eight hour window from midnight to eight. I go past it about 30 to 45 minutes. So I'm trying to get all the stations in with all the houses and the park and Sarrazin and all that. So we'll just have to, we'll cut back our times on those days, shorten up the minutes so I can fit everything into that six hour window.
Right, and just remember, we are using the water truck on the park and stuff, so you might be able to dial back the time a bit, because we're trying to hit that five days a week. So that's going to put a lot of water out there.
Yeah, what I'll do, if he if he hits it that much, I know it was three, if he goes to five now, I'll I'll probably be able to just completely turn the park off and save that area, and then at least keep the houses, you know, keep the houses going over there. I'd also like people to know, you know, the the people that are on the call is, a lot of these areas are set up differently with the irrigation. Sarrazin, all of Sarrazin Lane Place and Court and Jack's Place, that is a commercial irrigation setup. So when the valve comes on, there's three homes that water at one time. Over at Ventnor Circle and the Park, that is also set up that way, so three homes water at one. Then you go over to Fairway and Gulf Canyon, Teboks, California Oak, Shrub Oak, all those areas, everybody has their own controllers. So each house is individually ran over there on those areas. So they're all set up differently. So I just please ask everybody to please stay away from the clocks. I'm trying to set those clocks up. I've noticed, not everybody, but we've had some people break the clock doors open and and take the locks off, or they've messed with the clocks, and we have to keep adjusting them. It's very hard to walk 300 and some houses, because that's what we have to separately do to set all the clocks. So if they can work with us and try to keep all that set up, I'd really appreciate it. We're trying to do the best we can to working with the Water District and the HOA to abide by these rules. Sometimes my guys are going to be checking the sprinklers during the day. So I know we've been getting calls in about that, that we're on off days, but we only have the daylight hours when my guys come to work around 6:37, and we start checking sprinklers. We have to make sure there's no breaks in the lines, and the sprinklers are adjusted accordingly, and they're not squirting on the street or driveways. It's a lot of houses, so we try to, you know, do the best we can. So if people let us know through Common Interest, we'll take care of the problem as fast as we can if there's any leaks. But we are adjusting them during the day, so if people can, you know, be patient with us and let us try to do that and not call us in and think we're wasting water, we're running on off days, we're trying to do our job and and try to save water, even though we are checking sprinklers during the day. The other thing I just wanted to note as far as landscaping is, please do not touch our trees up here. We've had some people trimming trees, cutting trees down, and that's our biggest asset right now is shade and having the trees full. Obviously, if they're touching the homes, or we have an issue with them being too thick or something, we'll take care of it. But please call Common Interest, let us know, but let us handle it. Because we've had people just hacking the trees, then we have to completely remove the trees because they're an eyesore, or they're not doing their job. And right now, we need all the shade we can get to help us with the situation. So I really appreciate that, but we'll do our best we can to work with the Water District. So, um, I really appreciate that, but we'll do our best we can to work with the water district and also try to keep the homes green. Um, we also did aerate last month. We were a little bit out of whack. We were going to do it this fall. But we end up doing it because we wanted to try to loosen up the ground and see if we could, um, get the water into the soil. Um, but then we got cut back to two days, and it hurt us a little bit, but hopefully that's going to help us out as well.
Hey Chad, are we, Chad, I have a, I have a question. Are we, um, this is Matt. Are we trying to, um, keep the grass maybe a little taller here in the summertime, because it'll hold the moisture better? Um, are we trying to maybe get a three-inch pile on it or anything like that? Are, are we having your guys like, try to do that?
Yes, we, we did raise the mowers up. I was talking to Ron about that, um, this week. We did raise the height, but now with the lawns being so short and dry, we're not really gaining any growth. But we did do that as soon as we got cut back, we tried to raise the height. So some of the lawns do not need to be mowed right now, but in some cases, we're mowing them. Because some of the leaves on, on the big sycamore trees were, um, Sarazin and Jack's Place usually in that area. Where the leaves are falling heavily right now, because the trees are trying to get acclimated to less water. So we're having to just basically help just to pick up the leaves and clean everything up. So, but we have, we have done that, and, and if the, the lawns do start coming back and getting greener, we will be mowing them taller, as well as putting another fertilizer application on once we get some more water.
Awesome. And then again, for all the community, when you hear us say that we're using our water truck, um, some of you might be like, well, then you're using all the water. That's our backwashed water. So we're using the backwashed water, and backwashed water is what we put on the roads. And also, if it gets, the, if the tank gets too full, some of it goes down the sewer, um, which is normal. Uh, it's kind of like your sink, when you fill up the water in the sink, when it gets to that overflow, it goes down. That's kind of what our tanks do, if it gets too high, and, because we're not getting it out fast enough onto the roads, then some of it'll go down the sewer. What we're trying to do is get all of it we can and get it out there, and we're just doing overspring. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is we talked, um, Ron and I talked ad nauseam over this. And whether or not we could start using the water truck too, to maybe throw water up on some of your guys' front yards. And the problem with that, Ron, um, went out and took a kind of a survey of the place. The problem is, is coming out of that truck is a very high-pressured water, and everybody's lawn is different sizes. So some of the water could totally destroy the bark, some could hit windows and break it, some, some could hit the side of your house and chip housing. And so the liability is just too strong, and we just can't do it. But we were just thinking of outside-of-the-box ways that we, as the district, could help the community. Um, but that one sort of got shot down by the liability side of it. So we can do the, the, the medians, we can do the park. Um, but we really can't get into anything that could damage bark, houses, windows, or anything like that. So I just wanted everybody to know, but the truck is using backwashed water, not the water coming from the canal that we're having to use to bring water to your houses. It's what we're doing to clean everything and backwash it. Okay?
Cool, I have a quick question. Um, first of all, I appreciate the kind of the overall description you get, you gave. I think it gives a good, um, thousand-foot overview of kind of the whole situation. When we're talking about going to three days, are we still working within the two fifty allotment that Kern has given us? I just want to be clear on what we're doing here. We are actually asking for a little bit more, because I know you mentioned that. I just want to be clear.
We are not asking for anything right now. We are, we are begging the community to continue to conserve. Conserve more, do your part. Um, we're, 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 we're hoping that everybody, when it comes to watering your lawn, you're not going to start watering it four times a day or any of that. That you're cutting back your water, but just get the water, the, get your lawn what it needs to just survive. Um, we're not looking at plush, green lawns. We're just looking at not having the landscaping die. By doing that, we're going to, we're going to watch every week, we're going to watch, and we're going to closely watch. Ron's going to be looking at numbers like a scientist, and he's going to be checking out how we're faring. If we can still pull this off and get to the end of October, November, before we have to say, hey Kern, can you give us a little more water? That would be really helpful, because again, we're in negotiations, and we hope those negotiations continue. And it just gets us down the road a little further before we have to say, could you please give us a little more water? So we're giving it a shot, and we're hoping this community is going to do its part. But we had to do what we had to do. I can't overemphasize this. We had to do what we had to do. Because while we're in these negotiations, Kern is like, what are you doing? We had to show them an ordinance. We had to show them that we were, you know, coming in with good faith. We have to keep that up.
Can I make a quick comment? I've had a couple of people, a couple of residents come up to me and, um, make a comment. Um, so I'd like to make a clarification here. Um, Ron is our only certified person right now that is trained, okay? We did have a staff member who left, um, but we have hired someone else, but he's not trained. And our system is not automatic, okay? It, it, it's all manual. So he has to be trained before we can leave him alone, which means he can't be there by himself on Saturday. Several people have asked me, why aren't you guys hi- hiring? Why aren't you guys recruiting? We are. We have hired someone, but everybody has to be trained. And right now, Ron is doing a, a really great job of also getting the rest of our staff, um, the schooling and the education to get them certified too, so that we have more than just Ron and the one guy. We, if we can get most of our staff certified, then we can juggle a little bit better. But right now, with Ron being the only one who knows our system that is certified, it, it, it makes it hard. I mean, um, he is training a new staff member who is certified, but again, he's training that person.
And training doesn't take just a week or two. It's, it's months. We're talking three months, four months.
Especially since our system is manual, it's not automatic.
Right.
Pattersons and Pattersons and Modestos and, and Tracys and Turlocks, they're all automatic. Ours is not.
Got it. This is Chad again. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to state also that, um, we appreciate the three days extra we can get. And also, if this weather cools off in eight weeks or six weeks, whenever we start getting colder weather, we'll definitely, as fast as we can, we'll, we can start cutting the water back to two days to one, and then hopefully none if the wa- if the rains come. So I just want you guys to know, we'll do everything we can with Mother Nature to work within what we can hopefully use. The other thing is, the other thing is, um, I know Ron's been getting these calls as well as I have. A lot of people that are overwatering their backyards, the drains come out to the front sidewalks of the houses. And we get a lot of calls that, Chad, you got a water leak, there's water leaks everywhere. Well, a lot of it is people overwatering their backyards. And the drains come from the backyard to the front, and then they leak out over the sidewalk. So we're, we are checking on every call we get, but a lot of those problems are the homeowners overwatering the backyard. And we, there's not much we can do except send them a letter and let them know what's going on.
Again, this is, this is Jose. We will be sending email blasts on a regular basis to remind people to conserve and do everything we can to, to, to help.
Yeah, thanks, Jose, and that is appreciated, because guys, if we can, if, if, if we don't do this, then we're going to lose thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of landscaping, and we don't want to do that. Nobody is for that. So yes, please, everybody conserve.
I just want to make a quick plug too, that we still probably have, uh, two dozen or so buckets over at the office, so if anybody needs a bucket for catching that gray water, go on down and grab one.
Cool, so let's open. Sorry, just so we're clear, what, what is the amount of time that we're going to be watering each one of these days? Is it, uh, is it ten minutes still, or is that the proposed timeframe?
You mean for the HOA, or you mean for residents in general?
Each, I'm sorry, jumping back to the three days that we're increasing to?
Right.
Are we looking at ten, ten minutes each one of those days?
Well, we never, we've never set a time. Um, I, I think what, I think what everybody just needs to do is use common sense. I'm a common sense kind of a guy.
Talking about the front yard, talking about, I'm talking about the landscaping, yeah.
No, I, I, I understand, but for the people who, because again, we have different people up here. So we have some people that do their own landscaping. For them, I'm saying, use common sense. And please, if your yard does not need water, don't water. If it needs a little bit of water, use a little bit of water. Just use common sense. We're trying to conserve. For Chad, who's doing the bulk of the, of the, the properties, we're going to trust him that he's getting things on timers. And he's going to do what needs to be done, and he knows the severity of this situation. And we're just gonna, we're gonna, um, trust our HOA and their landscaper to see this through. I think we have competent people that can make that happen.
Matt, I was going to say, uh, just so everybody knows, I think we calculated that, at, at the last meeting. What Chad takes care of is, uh, obviously specifically the front yards of only certain subdivisions. He doesn't take care of any of the, you know, they're, they're not setting for the backyards and the customs and the reserves. And so he's only, you know, that's about a third of the community that he controls. Everything else is everybody else doing their own timer. So that's all we need is, if, if, if everybody can have the three days, they can go to their clocks and just cut the time back. You know, instead of two days, put it on three and cut the time back or match the time. But, but to make sure that, to reiterate to everybody, just to shut the water, if they can, don't water on Saturday and Sunday at all. And that'll help out the plant.
Yes. And everything else in the ordinance is staying, staying there. Just so you know, if we pass this three-day thing, we're still not watering car, or watering cars, washing cars, we're still not, we're still staying to our ordinance. Our ordinance is there, we're just laxing the two-day to a three-day, and we're going to give us all a chance to, um, save our landscaping. And, and I'm, I'm trusting this community is, is going to do this.
Might I make a suggestion, and I know this is probably impossible to oversee, but just to put the number out there, you know, if they're going to do three days a week, maybe set a time limitation, you know, just to know that we encourage you, if you're watering three days a week, do not water more than however many minutes. And maybe Chad can chime in on that. That way, people kind of have a gauge to go by. I, I don't know, just a suggestion.
I agree.
Ron, Ron or Chad, Ron, what is your time limit, you're thinking would be a good time limit for the average homeowner to be watering their lawns? Couple minutes, five minutes?
Fifteen minutes a station should be more than enough.
Right now, I'm watering five minutes. Right, this is Chad. Right now, I'm watering five minutes a station twice a day. So I'm watering, most of the homes are at one in the morning, and then at five minutes, and the next time is at five in the morning for five minutes. The park is a totally different setup. The heads are different, but we've got longer run times. But pretty much ninety percent of the community is two start times, one in the morning and five in the morning, and each time is five minutes. So it's pretty light. I can't go much more than that on a lot of it, because I've got so many stations to get through. Um, we have a few pressure issues where we can't run a lot of valves at once, or the water just, you know, will barely run out of the head. So to, and it's plus to try to make this eight-hour window, which, uh, Ron knows right now. And like I said, I'm running to almost nine hours to try to make it through, because we've got so many stations to get through. So the six-hour window is going to be very tight, but on that day, we're going to have to try to readjust and, and at least get some water, but shorten up the times. But that's what we've been watering on those days. So the lawns have only been getting a total of twenty minutes a week, which that's why the lawns look the way they do, and the plants are starting to suffer.
And because they're going five days with no water.
Okay, so, um, I want to open it up to the community, get some questions on this particular thing. Um, we're not opening it up for anything else. It's just, I want to get people's feedback if everybody's okay, and if they have any questions for their own watering that they're doing. So if there's anybody in the community, just, yeah, go ahead, Ron.
Hey, I, I just wanted to, uh, just ask the, the residents of the community to, um, be patient. If you're coming in the guard shack in the morning, or anytime during the day, and you see the water truck, because he is going to have to go backwards, you know, where you come in, he's going to have to go out that way to water that grass area. And then he'll turn around and come in and water the other side, because the water only shoots off of one side of the truck. So just please be patient. He won't be there very long, but when, we're just trying to help.
Good point.
Please don't cut them out.
Alright, anybody that, from, anybody from the community that would like to, um, ask a question regarding the water? Okay, Kevin Halverson. Oh, he went away. Michael Oliver. Oh, wait, okay, let's go with Mike first. Go ahead, Mike.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this question is for Ron.
Yes.
My question is this, uh, I've heard that we are operating the pump stations manually. And so my question is, have they, did they ever, were they ever operating automatically? Controlled by some sort of a controller, and, and we switched over to manual for some reason? Do you know? Have they always been manual? Because that doesn't make sense. I, I haven't heard of a, a water treatment plant that, that runs things manually.
Mike, as, as far as I know, um, from the time that I have been here, this plant has always been ran in manual. I, when Viola Water was here, I don't know if it ran in auto or not, but right now, it's not capable of running in auto.
So we have to send someone down to each pump station to turn pumps on? Is that, is that what I understand?
What, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
So when, when we need water from a particular pump station, we have to send someone down from the water plant to turn those pumps on?
That, that is correct, and we are currently working on getting our radios back up and working for that. Um, we're very close to getting that fixed, so we won't have to do that. We will still need a guy to ru- run the, uh, pump stations, but he won't have to drive up and down the parkway all day.
Thank you.
Great question, Mike. Thank you. Alright, Kevin Halverson.
I just have a, I mean, I have a, hey, how are you?
Good.
I have like five questions, but I'm sure they're going to come later on. It's going to be reopened later on, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so my main question right now is, uh, what is the watering cycle current? What days are they being watered? And I heard it was one AM, five AM for five minutes, but what days?
Currently, it's Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, anybody else that has a water question? Okay, so then I would like to make a motion for us to lax the, uh, two-day to a three-day watering week, and we will be reviewing weekly how we're doing. And hopefully, this will be able to continue for the remainder of the year. Um, so do I have a second on that?
I'll circuit that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okey-dokey. Um, so now we're going to go to the public comment section. And in accordance with Government Code five four nine five four point three A, the public may address the water board on a matter of an item which has been set forth in this notice for this special meeting. So we will open it up. If you have a question, raise your hand. Alright, Mr. Halverson, you've got four questions.
I do, ish. You don't, you already?
Yeah. Fire away.
Um, so since our plants are dying in our front yard, is, uh, the HOA going to make it easier for us to get those pulled? And if, what if we wanted to go to a drought-resistant front yard, can we?
Great question. So I don't answer those questions here in the water board. These would be questions for the HOA, um, board. And if Jose would like to answer that, he is more than welcome to, but if he does not and wants to wait for an HOA meeting, he can't.
I, I don't know that I can answer that outside of an HOA meeting without, you know, making that public. But certainly, if, if you're not on one of the HOA maintained homes, and you want to go to a drought-resistant home, uh, you can always submit your application, and I, I know for a fact that, uh, there are people doing it, and we have approved some.
Perfect. Um, second question.
second question. Uh, are we, since things are starting to get dried out here, are we doing anything in particular, uh, water district-wise to assist with fire prevention?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a question that keeps me up at night. Um, Ron, would you like to put your thoughts in on this one?
The, the, the only thing that I can tell you that the water district is doing is, is uh, in case there's a grass fire or something around, is we keep our water truck full of water that um, the driver actually lives in Patterson, so he could be there in 15 minutes. I know that's not a big help, but with the water from Kern like it is, we, we, we can't, we can't really justify putting water in those ponds. Um, I wish we could, but it's just, it's just not, it's not in the...
Let, let me jump in on this one. So again, Ron and I have been racking our heads on lots of different ideas. And we tried to use some of our backwashed water to get into some of those ponds to make sure that there's water in them. And the crazy thing is, is when you try to let it out, because if we use the piping system, we're gonna get charged from Kern for water. So if we use the backwashed water, it's gotta go down a creek and go into the, into the ponds. And then when it goes into the ponds, then each pond, as it fills, goes into the next pond, the next pond, the next pond. The problem is, is as soon as we tried to do that, the creek just was sucking up the water like crazy. And so it never reached the ponds. So we pulled the plug on that really quick and said, this is just not gonna work. And we can't have water going to the ponds and then water the park and the medians and all of that. So we want to save the water, or excuse me, save the landscaping. And we're just gonna have to deal with trying to keep nine feet of water in that tank up there on the hill as best we can by everybody conserving. And we're just gonna have to do what we can, but we, we just, this is the situation that this developer has put us in. And they're not a developer. This landowner has put us in. They have put this community in this situation. That is the bottom line. So what we have to do is we have to figure out what is the best and what is, what, what, what do we want? What do we want to save at this point? The landscaping. So that's what we're doing. Please don't throw out a cigarette butt when you're going down the canyon. Please, you know, watch what you're doing when you're barbecuing, having campfires in your backyard. I mean, just take responsibility and common sense, and that's all we can do up here. That's all we can do. And we're just gonna, we're gonna come together as a community and we're gonna win. That's, we're gonna make this through. We're gonna get through this, guys.
I like that positive attitude.
Absolutely.
The uh, the tech that came out to try to fix the AC units within the pump stations, uh, before we figured out it was gonna be close to $50,000 to replace, how much did that cost?
Um, I don't believe we have a bill for that yet, but I believe it's gonna be under, under $1,500 to check all four of them. And he's, he actually serviced the two that were working.
Perfect. And then I'm still new to this area, so I'm trying to figure out everything and how everything works up here. Kind of bought the house and got thrown into this whole drought and water crisis and all this good stuff. Wasn't told about it when I bought the home, so you know, yay me, right? But is, is the, is the water district public?
Yes.
Yes.
So the employees of the water district are public, correct?
Yes.
Okay, how much was the raise?
We can't discuss financial um, issues on um, the, on public employees. We can't discuss that. The amount, the amount of the raise, the amount of the raise is public.
Yes, it is.
That, that has to be public. I, I myself am a public employee. I work for the government, so.
Yes.
I thought you were asking for their wages.
My salary, my salary is posted where everybody can see it, so that's why I'm wondering.
That, that, can I, can I jump in on that?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, we did a um, salary study. And our staff, um, and it was one of the reasons they were leaving. Our staff was making significant, uh, I'm not gonna say all of them, but a, a large portion of our staff was making significantly less than um, even, even working in the warehouse at Amazon, okay? So they...
My, 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 my question isn't, isn't in regards to do they deserve it? I 100% believe that they get it, and I get the, you know, being a business owner as well, I get the fact that you need to make a, a, a marketable wage out here to collect people and get them to work for you. I absolutely get that. I'm just wondering how much the raise was. That's all.
Okay, it, that's what I was just gonna get at. So um, it, the members each got a little bit different. It wasn't a percentage. What we did was, when we did the salary, we made their salaries commensurate with what everyone around us is making. In some cases, um, it was only a dollar. In some cases, it was a little more. So I, I can't give you a percentage, but the, because we just approved the salary schedule, it will be on our website because it is, as you know, public information.
Awesome. And are they on the purse?
No.
They're not California purse?
No, they are not.
Again, I'm not trying to jam anybody up or anything. I'm just trying to figure out what's going on here, right? And you guys, so far from what I've seen, have done an amazing job on trying to fix the, the crappy situation that you all are in, and me too, because I bought the house.
To be totally honest, to be totally honest with you, our employees, which is something we are working on, our employees currently do not have a retirement system.
Okay. Well, hopefully that'll, that'll change soon when uh, we get a good builder in here that actually does stuff, right?
Correct.
Yeah. From your lips to God's ear.
Yeah. They do have health benefits, but they do not have a retirement.
All right, well, I appreciate you all. That's uh, that should be all my questions unless I come up with another one. So thank you.
Great questions, Kevin. Appreciate it.
iPhone.
Hi, in regards to that backwash water that you guys are watering the, or planning on watering the parks with, how safe is that for animals and for the lawns to, to back, to get watered with?
Ron?
I just...
All right, I'll answer that. That water is, is perfectly safe. That water's actually been, we took samples and, and ran it to our lab and have them tested. It is perfectly safe. It's would not, originally what would happen is we would take that water and we would reclaim, we recycle it back into the plant and reuse it again. But the state, um, we're not approved to do that with the state. We are working towards getting that done to help ease the water problem. But at the current rate, we are not, and the state is, is good with, they know that we are watering the, the medians and uh, all the stuff with the water. So it's, it's perfectly safe.
Is there any way for us to get the lab samples of these results?
I can look those up, yes.
Can they be posted for everybody to see?
I, I believe that's okay. Was it that, that'd be okay, huh, David?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
It's gonna take me a little bit to get them, but I will get them for you.
Okay, I was just concerned about the kids playing in the park and the animals and all of that with the backwash water. It's usually not the ideal, but thank you for clarifying.
Right, no, it's perfectly safe. And, and the driver of the truck also knows just to, is, is the concern a little bit, is the driver knows if there's anybody around the park or stuff, he will not, he will not water. We'll go back at a later, later time.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Kevin?
Yeah, last one, I promise. Um, is there, minus everything else that's going on here, is there any reason why we're not sticking and adhering to the state guidelines for the drought? And that we have more of a strict one besides the fact that, you know, one, money issues, right? Which I don't really consider a water crisis, having money crisis, two different things. But as far as physical water sources go from Kern County, the ability to use it, water crisis, is there any reason why we're not following the state guidelines?
Dave, would you like to answer that?
I'm not entirely sure what is meant by state guidelines. Each, each water district um, and city and municipality is more or less left to their own devices on what um, conservation measures they want to implement.
Right, no, 100%, I get that. I'm just wondering why we have the conservation methods that we're using now in place for us specifically? Because per the state, you know, they, they, there's not three days worth of watering. There's not, I mean, you can't water between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, right? There's different things that the state's mandating. And I get that each county and each uh, water district can make up their own. I'm just wondering the reasoning behind ours.
I, I mean, all I can really say that is that it's, it's been this board trying to balance between the draconian conservation measures to trying to provide, you know, the maximum amount of benefit to keep, to keep the, the ratepayers happy. Frankly, I mean, that's, that was pretty much what was discussed tonight. I, I don't know that I can, that there's just a list of, of things to, that'll, that'll make an adequate response to your question.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you for trying.
Sure.
Can I just pitch in on that a little bit?
Yeah.
It's Chris. Uh, I think the major driver, of course, is the 250 acre foot limitation. Am I wrong?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So 250 acre feet is, for your information, Kevin, since you're new, 250 acre feet is like the bare minimum for this community with no golf course. And that's what we've been set at for this year and next year. So.
Due to the fact that Angels Crossing has not paid their contractual obligations of $3 million to Kern for water.
And, and I think a little bit of, I'm, I'm sorry for interrupting Chris, but um, just to be clear, that we've been set at that by Kern County, not by us.
Right.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Does that help, Kevin?
I think, I was gonna jump in here real quick.
Go ahead, Julie.
Sorry, Chris.
I don't know.
Um, I was just gonna say, so they uh, to let Kevin know that, you know, because typically since we're on a state water project, they have a certain percentage that everybody is on, who's on a state water project. And so ours might be a little bit different because in addition to that limitation, we were cut back on top of that just because of the, the, the billing that wasn't paid by the, the landlord for the last couple of years. So that's what we're trying to balance, what David's referring to. So we actually have a little bit more than what every, or a little bit less than what everybody else bought this year on the water project, so that might help as well.
Yeah, we should have 400 acre feet to use based on the 5% allocation that the state regulated to us. Unfortunately, Kern has cut that to 250 because of the delinquent $3 million bill that Angels Crossing has not paid. Go ahead, Kevin.
Oh, sorry. There you go, Kevin.
No, that, Julie, thank you for that. That was absolutely my question right there, and now it clicked, so I do appreciate it, and Chris as well, thank you.
You got it.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, so we will see you guys back in our next regular meeting Wednesday, August 11th, 2021. A motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
You too.
You too.